Well, that happened before the meeting started. Lock him down.
All right. Well, we'll call this meeting to order. The City Council Study Session, Community Wellness Special Focus Area, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But this is February 26, 2024, 5:30 PM. City Hall Council Chambers. Public Participation, Public Participation, the Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting, scheduled for today, Monday, February 26, will be held in person and virtually. Virtual participation link to view the meeting virtually, please click on the link that can be found on the city agenda for tonight's study session, found on the city website. The link to the virtual meeting also can be found on YouTube. To listen to the meeting by phone or Zoom, please call the below number or click the link. The telephone numbers are (253) 205-0468, or toll-free (888) 475-4499. There is a Zoom link as well. So Hannah, would you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Emir.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
All right, so Hannah, are there any agenda modifications?
No, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I talked about the special focus area. I just want to remind the council that there is no agenda items under the special focus area tonight, so it'll just be a meeting that I'll be chairing. Agenda items for council discussion tonight. The first item is Office of Equity Department Overview by Director Goodson Moore, and the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Brenda Goodson Moore, and I'm the city's Chief Equity Officer. And I'm joined here tonight with Keisha Taylor, who is our Youth and Teens Coordinator in our Parks Department, and Hillary Pittinger, who is our Museum Curator of Collections at the White River Valley Museum. So Keisha's here tonight to talk about the role of employees in racial equity work here at the city, and she's going to cover the Inclusive Auburn Team and the Ready Coalition work that we'll talk about this evening. And Hillary's here to talk about her unique role as an educator here at the city who is providing DEI training to all staff on the history of the city of Auburn. So our office is operating right now currently under three primary pillars. The first one being being in compliance, organizational development, and building competence. These are internal areas of work that we're currently undertaking, and we're building compliance which includes organizational development, cultural competency, and capacity building. And I thought we'd just talk a little bit about the city of Auburn's DEI journey. The city's journey started in 2019 with Resolution 5427, which was passed to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with the city's first racial equity consultant in order to begin the Inclusive Auburn Initiative. These goals set forth by the city can only be met by increasing the city's DEI maturity through, as I mentioned on the last slide, organizational development, capacity building, building equity fluency, and ensuring compliance. It also requires clear, consistent, inclusive, and transparent community engagement and outreach, which you will hear more about later. The city of Auburn has been very intentional in its approach to improving racial equity in the city. We have invested heavily in training, consulting, strategic planning, and inclusive engagement strategies and programs. And I'll talk a little bit about our organizational chart. Our office is about 18 months old, so pretty new. It consists, right now, there's, there are three positions in the office. My position as the Chief Equity Officer or Director. We have a DEI analyst, Kia McGloan, who unfortunately could not be with us this evening. And we have a vacant community engagement and outreach position that we hope to fill very soon. Okay, so the first area that I want to talk about tonight is how we need to be in compliance here at the city. So this folk, this area focuses on policies, codes, legislation, or regulatory requirements. And in our organization, that looks like many different areas of the organization. There are a lot of areas of compliance that pertain to our HR department specifically in recruitment, hiring policies, and employment laws. And then there are areas that are primarily housed in the Office of Equity. These are two of the programs our office supports, our office currently supports in collaboration and consultation with the city in relation to grant requirements and government compliance. Our city often applies for and receives government, which includes state or federal grants. The federal government awards resources in the forms of grant money, equipment, programs, and positions to different entities for public projects. This funding also has strict reporting and compliance processes that must be adhered to. As part of the federal and state Title VI program requirements, the city is also in the process of developing a language access program. In the Office of Equities, it is the Office of Equity's goal to ensure that our current programs and services are more accessible and comprehensive so that we are serving our community members equitably. And the next area that I want to talk about is the organizational development, and this includes employee engagement and access. Our employees are, are our internal community, and we include them in our decision-making processes when it comes to racial equity work. Keisha Taylor, who's a member of our Inclusive Auburn Team and a current member of our Ready Coalition, is here, and she's going to talk a little bit about the work we are doing within these two important teams.
So first, I'll start with the Inclusive Auburn Employee Advisory Team, also known as IAAT. A lot of acronyms there.
We love those.
Yes. So it was formed in 2022. Representatives from each department, which are, which are listed on the screen, from Finance, Planning Police, Public Works Administration, and, last but not least, Parks. Early on in the kind of works of the Inclusive Auburn Team, we are employee-based, so all the employees kind of came together, or all the employees that are part of the Inclusive Auburn Team came together to create somewhat of a charter statement. So we came up with mission, we came up with a vision, we came up with goals, all within this group of, I forgot the number, I want to say 13 at the time.
Let's shift it.
It has shifted. By the time, it was 13 of us who kind of created that charter statement. So our mission in the Inclusive Auburn Team, so the mission of Inclusive Auburn is to build the city of Auburn into an anti-racist organization with a clear commitment to serve the needs of our diverse community through racial equity, dismantling exclusive systems and modeling inclusive and anti-racist actions through listening, sharing, and advocacy. We will accomplish this through direct action by team members and being a support cheerleader, resourceful of the city of Auburn leaders, and our fellow city staff as they do the transformational work necessary to be an anti-racist organization. And that is the goal that we came, or that is the mission that we came up with as a group. A couple of examples of the goals that we kind of created for ourselves in the group was to identify opportunities for transformational change within the organization and to make recommendations to our city leaders as well. Another example of a goal that we created was to encourage and model the use of the racial equity toolkit in the development of new programs and initiatives that we have here in the city, which I think we will talk about later, later on in the slides. So the Inclusive Auburn Team has actually evolved into an employee resource group. Another acronym for you, ERG. You are not familiar with it. Who we currently still meet with today. A lot, or not a lot, I think it was three, I should have wrote this number down. There were three, three to four of us from the Inclusive Auburn Team who actually transitioned to the Ready Coalition. So the Ready Coalition, another acronym, Ready, racially equitable, diverse and inclusion coalition, who, it was actually formed in 2023, that currently has seven staff members, which are some of those group members from the Inclusive Auburn Team, three directors, the mayor, and two council members. The, all of, everyone that is currently on the Ready Coalition were nominated by the peers of everyone else. So the other directors and some of the other Inclusive Auburn Team committees. So currently, or the purpose of the Ready Coalition is to develop and create a work plan for the city that would, pretty much, will work with each department to work cross-departmental, so that we can kind of execute the, the work plan for the city of Auburn.
Can I ask?
Yes, Councilmember Emir.
Thank you. Is there is possibility for new council member to be part of Ready Coalition?
So right now, on the Ready Coalition, we're currently talking about what the coalition looks like after the work plan, if that's something that we're going to continue to, to have a ready coalition, or if we're going to disband after we create our work plan. So definitely stay tuned on that. We're, it's, it's actually, we were just talking about it in our last meeting, so.
Yes, Councilmember.
Are you going to have your mission statement on the webpage?
For the coalition?
Yeah.
I'm not sure yet. We, we're still working on it. We're still fine-tuning the ready vision, so we'll definitely be sharing that out once we're finished with it, but that's a great idea, a great suggestion.
I just like the wording, how you worded it.
Oh, for the Inclusive Auburn Team? Is it on the internet available or no?
Yes, but this, I thought you were talking about the ready.
With the ready.
Okay.
All of that.
Okay. The ready vision. All right. So another pillar is our learning and development. So as we're building competence through the organization, we're increasing racial equity fluency for all employees. We're going to hear from Hillary Pittinger from the White River Valley Museum, who has partnered with the Office of Equity to provide unique specialized DEI learning and development for our employees. But before I turn it over to her, I just want to mention that Hillary and Rachel McAllister, our Museum Director, will soon be traveling to Minnesota as one of 24 jurisdictions from across the country, selected to participate in the museum's Advancing Racial Justice convening at the Science Museum of Minnesota. This is a huge honor and a testament to the amazing work that the museum is doing here in the city of Auburn. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
So my role is, I am not an employee of the Office of Equity. I am a Parks Department employee like Keisha. But as the museum curator in charge of historical research, I was in a unique position to provide historical training to the employees here in the city. So beginning in 2022, we developed a one-and-a-half to two-hour program that every single City of Auburn employee went through, which focused on the racial history of our community, going back from the time immemorial with our indigenous populations all the way up through today. To date, we have seen 479 full-time employees go through the training. At the end of 2023, we had finished all of our established employees going through, and now moving forward, it will be something that all new hires go through that is offered quarterly so that we retain that training as new folks are onboarded. It is a standard part of employee onboarding now that is tracked and monitored by our HR department, and we are thrilled to be doing it, and it's been really great. Our, the three main goals of this program were to teach about how government work has impacted racial ethnic groups differently, to give employees an opportunity to reflect on how DEI work applies to each of their jobs, and to create a common baseline of knowledge of the historical realities of our, our community, and what the folks that everyone might be interacting with as they serve our community have been through, and, and what historical realities they bring with them to those conversations. We also had a robust feedback and evaluation system set up with this program so that we could make sure we were on the right track. This feedback system resulted in 67% of folks who went through gave feedback, which is a really high return rate that we are really pleased with. You can see in the chart breakdown, sort of the individual members by each department, so we feel really good that it is quite representative of our full-time employees as a percentage of each of those department staff. Some of the numerical things we asked about was, how satisfied were you with this tour? Just sort of a temperature check. And on a scale of zero to five, they gave us a 4.56, pretty good. Asking if they would recommend this tour to others, they gave us a 4.35. And then on, asking them on a scale of zero to five, how much this information would impact their work, they gave us a score of 3.55 on average. So we feel pretty happy with the general direction of the tour and that it is giving people information that is useful. But I really want to break down that informing work score a little bit to talk about how we can evaluate all the things that we do when we do employee programs. This is a chart that we made breaking down that informing work score by department. And I mentioned at the top that it's a one-and-a-half to two-hour tour. The reason I said that variability is because existing employees got a two-hour tour. All the new hires got a one-and-a-half hour tour with an extra half hour done by First Brenda and then later Kia when she came onboard, that was just talking about DEI work, the Office of Equity, and the importance of that work to each employee's job. And we can see here, these yellow bars represent the new hires and how highly they ranked their ability to connect their job to the information that they got during this tour. So we can see how impactful that was, and we can see how impactful it was that our established employees did not get that information. So we can use feedback like this, and we will continue to be collecting high-quality data like this in order to direct our DEI efforts and make sure we're being as effective and efficient as possible. Here's some of the very kind feedback that we got. It was overwhelmingly positive, which was very kind and definitely helps us along our way. This tour, now that it is developed, we have been able to offer it to folks outside of the city as well. So we have given this program to the Civics Academy, to senior center participants, to the members of our parks, various boards and commissions that are connected to the Parks Department, to Green River College staff, and to Valley Regional Fire Authority staff. So there is a public desire for this information, and we are looking forward to being able to serve folks outside of the City of Auburn staff with this program as well, and help other municipalities develop their own programs for forwarding DEI, whether that is through their museums or through other resources.
Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
I was going to say, I don't know if other councilmembers know, for our new folks, but I was able to do the tour, and so I assume the tour is also available to you guys if you want to tag along with any of the other onboarding groups. It was a fairly quick, I mean, I love museums. I felt like it went very fast. I probably would have asked more questions, but I, I think, I was most impressed that when I got to attend, it was a late Friday afternoon, and there were a lot of people still hanging in, asking questions, and, and staying engaged for the cohort that I went through with. But basically, you can also join in if you like.
And we'd be happy to set one up that is a better time that works for folks with their varied schedules. So we can, we can talk about that later if you want.
Okay, kind of the final area that I'm going to talk about this evening is really amplifying community. Racial equity work is centered on community, and especially in government. So effective January 1, neighborhood programs transitioned out of community development, community services to the Office of Equity. And this is the position that I mentioned earlier that will be shifting to a broader community engagement outreach and strategy. And our community engagement outreach strategy is to continue to build community by providing investments and programming that promote inclusive engagement, increase accessibility of local government, and enhance community wellness. So some of our outreach and engagement programs include the Community Fund and the Community Matching Grants. So with the Community Fund Grant, the goal is to have a community-led initiative that promotes inclusivity and enhances community wellness. From January to March, ideas are gathered from those who live, work, and/or go to school in Auburn for a valley-centered project on city-owned property. During a voting process, community members select the project that they want to see, and it's up to $25,000 each calendar year. This could include one big project or smaller projects that add up to the $25,000. The applications are open from January through March, and the city is, functions as the project manager for whatever projects are selected. Some examples of those projects could be art projects, a community bulletin board, community gardens, memorial benches, little free libraries, of which we currently have nine, a little free pantry, a park renovation, or trash cans or pet waste stations. The Community Matching Grant is a fund that's used to support resident initiated, initiated and led projects within their community. The project must be inclusive of all residents who wish to participate. It's $2,500 per large project maximum, 1,500 for events and festivals, 1,500 for litter cleanup, and a maximum per community is 2,500. The group that is selected to receive the grant functions as the project manager for those projects. Some of these, some examples are, again, art projects, murals, rain work, art, beautification cleanup activities, disaster preparedness kits, community gardens, civic engagement, community events and workshops, school programming, memorial benches, and little free libraries. The goal of this grant is to support resident-initiated projects. It creates attachments between residents and their communities. It helps kids stay in school and excel. It maintains safe and beautiful neighborhood areas and promotes civic engagement. It also promotes residents connecting with each other.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Quick question on some of these grant funding. Can they be used, for instance, for National Night Out for Neighborhoods, like to, to elevate their neighborhood National Night Out or whatnot?
That is a very good question. And because this is really new to me, I don't want to say yes or no because I'm not quite sure.
Sure.
But I can certainly look into that and see if that's an option. It sounds like it would be, but before I say yes or no, I just want to check on that.
Sounds like it, thank you.
But I will let you know. Okay, and Civics Academy, I don't know how many of you are all familiar with our Civics Academy, but it's, it's a very well-put-together, well-oiled machine. Chris Lovings, who was here prior to us taking over the program, did an excellent job, and his predecessors. So our annual Civics Academy is a citywide educational program that shows how decisions are made, city funds are allocated, and city departments operate. It's an 11-week class on Thursdays and some Saturdays, from September through November, and it's about Auburn government, open to anyone interested in Auburn, which includes residents age 16 and over, students, business owners, and employees in Auburn. There's a free meal provided at each class, and participants receive a stipend for their attendance and filling out their surveys. Applications for this program open in July. And with that, as you can see, all of our focuses, all of our focus areas are targeted at meeting these commitments. I won't read them all out to you. It's a lot of words on the screen, I realize. But these are really the, these commitments encompass the work that the Office of Equity is doing and our why for doing the work that we're doing. And with that, I take any questions that you might have.
Does the council have any questions? Yes.
Civics Academy, 11 weeks is a long commitment. Is there an opportunity or maybe a way that that can be condensed? So maybe we can have it twice a year instead of rather once a year?
That's something that we could consider. I think there's been discussion, you know, about possibly looking at the 11 weeks and seeing if there's different places that we could condense each class, maybe combine a couple, but it's definitely something that we could consider and look into.
I was going to chime in, I think.
Councilmember Kate Baldwin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think part of the reason I have so many sessions, my understanding, is because part of it is meant to give time to each department as well as the tours that they do throughout the city. So I don't know.
Yeah, that is currently the reasoning behind it. But it's certainly, certainly something that we could think about, maybe offering it a couple of times a year or something like that. Right now, we just have to get an employee, so. It's kind of hard because we, we have limited capacity, but definitely something to think about. So I appreciate that suggestion.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Comments? Well, I just want to say how much I appreciate the work that you all do. I'm fortunate to be along with Councilmember Baldwin on the Ready Coalition, and I'm just so impressed with, you know, all of our participants, from the mayor down, this is a higher, non-high area, group, so. But everybody contributes to it, and, you know, it takes a certain amount of courage, I think, for folks to sit in there and talk about not an easy subject, but everybody has stuck with it, and just appreciate you all for being part of that. And for you being my technical expert to help me with my technology in the, in the Ready Coalition, so, thank you.
We all have strengths.
I'm looking for mine. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next up, we, we're going to be looking at the Resolution Number 5753, a resolution authorizing the duly-appointed administering agency for the South King Housing and Homeless Partners to execute all documents necessary to enter into the agreement for funding of affordable housing projects as recommended by the Skip Executive Board, utilizing funds contributed by the city to the Skip Housing Capital Fund. And Director, or is it Acting Director?
Acting Director. Yep, thank you, Deputy Mayor. For tonight's presentation on Resolution 5753, I'm going to turn it over to Claire Vanessa Goodwin and Jeff Tate.
He usually designates somebody.
Keeping you on your toes. Do a little quick introduction. For the record, my name's Jeff Tate, and Special Projects Director. So, and as Jason mentioned, joining us tonight is Claire Vanessa Goodwin, who's the Skip Executive Manager. And normally, I would just launch over and hand the reins to Claire, but I think Claire and Skip, the work of Skip, will be kind of a newer area for some of our newer councilmembers. So Claire's going to provide a little bit of background, but I just want to. So Claire's gonna provide a little bit of background, but I just want to mention that Skip is not only a collection of cities in King County that work together on housing, but Skip also is based in Auburn. Auburn is the administering agency, so Claire and Dorsel, who's here as well, are employees of Skip but work with us, and I think we're lucky to have their presence with us, really on a day-to-day basis, working on housing issues. So with that, I'll turn it over to Claire to jump into this particular resolution and recommendation for this evening.
Thanks, Jeff. And I should say, Dorsel and I are also lucky to be able to have the City of Auburn as our administering agency, so I'm always grateful for that. So, good evening, my name is Claire Goodwin, I am the Executive Manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. I'm excited to present to you the Skip Executive Board's recommendations on Skip's 2023 Housing Capital Fund. This will be an annual process, and some of you may recall a similar presentation from me last year at this time. So, we'll dive right in. So Skip was formed in 2019 through an interlocal agreement between several city governments in King County to address the housing needs of South King County as a unified, coordinated, collaborative coalition, and Auburn was a founding member. And as Jeff mentioned, you also serve as our administering agency. So Skip currently has 12 member jurisdictions, which are listed on the slide, in addition to the City of Sea-Tac, who recently took action to join Skip as our newest partner, so we're excited to have them join us. Auburn is represented by your very own Mayor Nancy Backus, who serves as Chair on the Skip Executive Board. And by way of background on Skip's Housing Capital Fund, in 2019, Substitute House Bill 1406 became law, allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it's used to support affordable housing initiatives. You may recall that the effective sales tax rate didn't change for the consumer, and instead, the tax gets credited against the state sales tax. In 2020, House Bill 1590 became law, allowing jurisdictions to impose a 1/10 of 1% local sales and use tax to support affordable housing, behavioral health facilities, and related supportive services. Cities had a limited window to act and retain those revenues before King County collected that revenue. And like most King County cities, Auburn does not collect it, but four of our member cities do, and we pool those resources for the Housing Capital Fund, which is why you're hearing about it tonight. So in 2021, City Council authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under Substitute House Bill 1406 from each participating member jurisdiction for use by Skip and funding affordable housing projects. In 2023, two of our member city councils authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under House Bill 1590 from both cities for use by Skip and funding affordable housing projects. In 2022, Skip launched the first funding round of the Housing Capital Fund, and last year, you approved two projects for funding. And a quick side note, an update on those two projects. So the Burien Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership Project has completed most of the civil work, including a large sound wall and the installation of utility infrastructure, and we anticipate closing on that project in late April, along with King County, who's also supporting that project. And then the second project, the Mercy Housing Northwest Burien Family Housing Project, is scheduled to apply for permits in late summer, and they anticipate beginning construction by mid-next year. And so even though we funded this project last year, the project needed to secure additional funding this year to move forward, and they successfully received awards from the Department of Commerce and King County. So this is the second of an annual process with Skip and member jurisdictions to fund projects with these pooled resources through the Skip Housing Capital Fund. Use of these pooled funds requires approval from each participating city council. Even though you have already contributed these funds to Skip, your council will need to take action to authorize the allocation of those funds to specific projects. So this approach allows multiple cities to pool their funds for projects across South King County to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. Skip opened the second annual Housing Capital Fund application in 2023. Six projects applied for Skip funding with broad geographic diversity throughout South King County. And if you recall, our last funding round received three applications, and all happened to be projects in Burien. So geographic diversity is one of our goals, and we made sure to get the word out this funding round that this new funding source is available. The Skip Advisory Board reviewed applications and forwarded its funding recommendation to the Skip Executive Board that reflected the policies and priorities adopted by the Board. After careful deliberation, the Skip Executive Board concurred with the majority of the Skip Advisory Board's recommendation and recommends funding for projects totaling $5,747,306, with $777,306 of the total sourced from Substitute House Bill 1406 revenue, and $4,970,000 sourced from House Bill 1590 revenue, as described in the Skip Executive Board memo dated January 17, 2024, which was included in your agenda packet, and you can see that on page 32. So the Skip Executive Board's recommended projects and funding levels for each project are listed on the slide, and I'll briefly go through each one. So first, we have Mercy Housing Northwest Kent Multicultural Village Inn. Yes, you guessed it, Kent. It's a 199-unit, new-construction, multifamily rental project located adjacent to the future Kent Des Moines Link Light Rail Station. The project will support households earning between 30% area median income, or AMI, to 80% AMI, with a 20% set aside for households with an intellectual and/or developmental disability or an ADD. The ADD units will benefit from onsite supportive services. A 30% set aside will be for families with children. Requested funding from Skip is $1 million, and the same amount was recommended by the Board. The special conditions include being a deferred contingent forgivable loan with no repayment as long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. Second is a project from Lehigh, located in Skyway and unincorporated King County. It's a 55-unit, new-construction, multifamily rental project with onsite supportive services. The project will support households earning between 30% to 50% AMI, with a 75% set aside for households transitioning out of homelessness. The project will prioritize tenants with a connection to the neighborhood and includes an early learning center. The requested funding from Skip is $2.8 million, and the same amount was recommended by the Board. Special conditions are the same as the previous project. So third is a project from TWG called Pandean at Star Lake, located in Kent, adjacent to the Kent-Star Lake Link Light Rail Station. Skip funding would support the South Building, which is a 168-unit, new-construction, multifamily rental project that will support households earning between 30% to 60% AMI, with set asides for families and families transitioning out of homelessness or are at risk of homelessness and households with an ADD. Onsite supportive services will be provided. The requested funding from Skip is $2,856,000, and the Board recommended $1,170,000 due to the construction timelines being further out than any of the other projects that applied for funding to us, but also we had exhausted our funding with other projects at that time. So special conditions include being a deferred 1% interest non-forgivable loan to the low-income housing tax credit partnership, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. And then finally, we have Multi Service Centers Victorian Place 2 in Des Moines. This is a 20-unit rehabilitation and preservation project, supporting five households earning up to 35% AMI, 10 households earning up to 40% AMI, and five households earning up to 50% AMI. The requested funding from Skip was originally $500,000, but an updated construction budget was submitted, and contingency funding was recommended by the Executive Board, bringing the recommended total to $777,306. Special conditions include being a secured grant with no repayment so long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant's recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. So this slide shows total amounts sourced from House Bill 1590, contributed by jurisdiction to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for each project. You'll see a similar breakdown for the Substitute House Bill 1406 funds on the next slide. So the first three projects we discussed are being funded through House Bill 1590 funds, pooled by the cities of Covington and Kent. So this slide shows total amounts sourced from Substitute House Bill 1406, contributed by jurisdiction to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for the rehabilitation project in Des Moines. You will also see the unallocated amount by jurisdiction to be used in future funding years, and the amount that was carried over from 2022. So we are seeking authorization from City Council to allocate the amount listed for this project under your city in alignment with the Executive Board's recommendation. This is $137,595 for the Multi Service Centers Victorian Place 2 Rehabilitation and Preservation Project. In conclusion, we're looking for your support to authorize the allocation of $137,595 from the city's contribution to the Skip Housing Capital Fund to finance the affordable housing project we talked about this evening, per interlocal agreement requirements. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One question I had is, and maybe this was a misunderstanding of the scope of Skip, is I think I was a little surprised to see the Skyway item on there, because I see that as being, you know, fairly north and not represented as a member within the Skip organization. What's the, who are all the potential applicants? Right, what's the, what would be the baseline for people to apply in to receive funding?
Sure, so first I'll say, so King County is technically a member of Skip. And we established in our founding interlocal agreement the scope of influence of Skip, and where funding could go towards and support. And part of that is in that South King County, unincorporated King County area. So, just, so you're aware of that. It even goes into Vashon Island as well, which is, can be a surprise to some, to some folks. But in terms of who can apply, it's geographically, it needs to be within the scope of influence. It can be for-profit affordable housing developers, it can be nonprofit affordable housing developers. Cities can apply, and we, we provide detailed outlines of, of all of this information in an annual document that we produce that outlines our Housing Capital Fund guidelines and priorities. And so, that, that's something we review with the Executive Board to ensure, every year, we're, we're making sure that we're, our priorities are aligned with what our member jurisdictions are, are feeling at that time.
Yes, Councilmember Trump.
How do, um, thank you for the presentation, first of all. How do we decide the amount of money that each city contributes?
It is entirely up to each of the participating members to decide how much to pool with the Skip, for the Skip Housing Capital Fund. And so Auburn contributes funds from the Substitute House Bill 1406. I believe it's 100% of the, of those funds.
That are collected in King County.
Thank you, yes, that's an important distinction. And so, for, for instance, we have a, an interlocal agreement with the city that kind of outlines what the funds can be used for, but council has taken action to dictate you wanted X percentage of this revenue source to come towards Skip. And so, most of the Skip member cities contribute from that same revenue source, and we're currently pooling two cities' House Bill 1590 funds, which is a, it's a larger amount because just in terms of that, the revenue the cities are able to gain from that is, is just a lot higher. And with the City of Sea-Tac just joining us now, they're actually bringing a general fund contribution to the Housing Capital Fund, and so it really is just dependent on each city and-
It's not by population or something like that?
So our operational member dues are based on population, so, and those funds are, go towards the salaries for Skip staff and our housing contracts.
At the risk of restating something, but maybe in some different words. So for the Auburn funds, Claire had mentioned that the City Council took action on House Bill 1406 back in 2021, I think, and that action was to make the commitment to pool those funds and send those funds. So that sales tax recapture, like Claire said, it's not an added sales tax, it's taking a portion of what's already collected, and allowing us to put it into this, the pooling piece is putting it into the capital fund. So it's not, I think that's important because that is our capital contribution on an annual basis, is that historically, 150 is the amount of money that we collect. As Mayor indicates, there's a portion of the city that's in King County, a portion that's in Pierce County, so some of that capital contribution goes south, some of it's to the Pierce County version of Skip, and most of it stays here in King County. So if I'm thinking about it from your perspective, it is that $150,000 promise that we made that we would take that sales tax capture and hand it over to Skip to help, just, help determine how to distribute it into South King County for affordable housing projects.
Thank you for clearing it up. The way you explained it, it made more sense to me. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, Councilmember Baldwin, please.
Thank you. And I think the other component that I know to me was important, because I think if you see our contribution and then what the greater King County gets out of it, as far as units and terms of housing, you know, it makes a lot of sense and it's a good investment. I, I like what we're doing here, right? I think it's just important to note that with the funds going out to those projects, it's not necessarily covering the entirety of that project. What it's doing is then creating a baseline that allows other agencies, like Department of Commerce or others, to come in and match, so those projects can get better lift. So it's, I know it's kind of a recap, but for me, the first time I saw this, it took me a second to be like, wait, what's going on here?
Yeah, last year, a couple, like, you know, the numbers were on the scale of like a project would be 20 or 30 million dollars, and the capital contribution from Skip was a million. So it's really about service providers out there, or for-profit builders, cobbling together lots of different sources of revenue to make these projects happen. to make these projects happen.
Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Last question, and this may be more to you, Special Projects Director. Do we have anything on our horizon? And this may be better to Mayor as well, as far as applications that we may have in the future to Skip.
Yeah, I mean, when, when you say we, I'm going to interpret that to mean, when would we might, might we see an Auburn project?
Yes.
Because the city is not likely to be applying for capital funds to build a project. But we are, through the, I think the efforts of Claire, you know, leading Skip, but also through some of the, you know, there's a, what's the name of the advisory body that helps determine how to?
The Advisory Board.
The Advisory Board. Getting the word out to other developers and trying to find those opportunities, that is an area of active engagement. And, you know, now that we're in our second cycle, you learn about how to maybe do engagement better next time. I think that there's a, that we really hope to see an Auburn project, whether it's a rehab project for an existing property. And I think that that might be the more likely first example of an Auburn supplemental. But I don't know how to answer the question, but it's not lost on us that we want some Auburn investments in our community, for sure.
And, and I should, I should jump in and say, we did have an application this funding round based in Auburn. And it was from the Multi Service Center who were funding their Des Moines Rehabilitation Project. So they submitted two applications for two separate projects. And they were only eligible for the smaller revenue source that we had available. So we could only really fund one fully. And so we asked them, what was the priority in terms of the building itself? And they felt the Des Moines project, it just needed a lot more work in a more timely way, and they're family-sized units. So they said the priority was Des Moines. That said, I know the Multi Service Center is currently applying to other funding sources for that project through Department of Commerce. And we've submitted a letter of support for that as well, so.
Thank you. I think the mayor.
That's what I was going to talk about.
That's a member.
It's just a statement. Thank you for clearing that up because if our constituents see that things are going to Kent and Marion, they're going to ask, well, why is our money going there and not in our city? So thank you for clearing that up.
Actually, that was something that I was going to comment on, that, you know, these home, this homelessness issue is not specific to Auburn. It is a regional problem. And I think that, you know, work that is done in Kent or, or Des Moines in a federal way to provide housing options, I think it's good for Auburn. But yeah, I would agree that, you know, we, we want to also receive that, but, you know, appreciate the coalition work that, that is being done by Skip. And so, Mayor, did you have anything else you wanted to add to this?
No, other than it, all of the member cities are contributing a significant amount of money, as you, as you see, to have over $6 million worth of funding in just our second cycle and just within a few years of our existence, when we didn't think we would be anywhere near this within many years. And so when the $1406 became available, that was the, that was the nexus for us. And then the $1590, which you'll recall, the city of Auburn did not take, that's what the county is using. The county did this before the city of Auburn took any action on it. And that's the Help Through Housing dollars, which are being used for the hotel purchases by King County.
All right, super. Any last questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Kate Bow.
Do you, when you're sort of projecting forward the trajectory of available funds, do you think we're going to stand this pattern of, you know, maybe a five to six million available each cycle? Or are we, fingers crossed, that that may continue to increase?
So I would say this last funding round, we, so we quadrupled the amount available the previous year. Part of that was the, the amount from the House Bill 1590 funds that were available because they had been pooling and aggregating. Every year, they were collecting it, they hadn't spent anything. And so it looked like an incredible amount of money, which it is, and ongoing. It'll be, it'll unfortunately be less than that. But we do have efforts, you know, in terms of Sea-Tac joining and, and them bringing forward this very generous general fund contribution and potentially, you know, some philanthropic contributions in an, in an ideal world. But in terms of, you know, the city's efforts, it, it will be, it'll be less than what we saw this year. But, but we're, we're working on it.
Accept the anomaly and we will continue on.
I should also say, in terms of geographic diversity, I think it's really important. You should know it is the Skip Board's priority to have geographic diversity in projects. And so, you know, in the long term, having at least one project in every Skip member jurisdiction is, is really the goal. And so I want you all to know that. Yeah, that's something we actively talk about.
Thank you. All right, thank you for your presentation. Very good work, Claire. And thank you, John. Next on the agenda, we have a PAC update. And Deputy Police Chief Betts is going to present tonight.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. For the record, Sam Betts, Assistant Chief of Police. As you guys, Mayor may not know, we started the PAC in 2020, our police advisory committee. It's comprised of over 20 members of our community here in Auburn. And two of our brave PAC members have come here this evening to give you a short report. So I will let them introduce themselves.
My name's Bob Holt. I am a retired from the police department. On the PAC, that's what I primarily represent. I also live in the Lower Lee Hill area, so I represent that as well. And some could say that I also represent for the PAC aged people. So we'll just leave that the way you want to interpret that. So that's what I'll leave it.
Hi, I'm Nora Hirschberger. I lived here in Auburn for, sorry, COVID changed everything. I don't remember, four or five years now. I represent the Asian-American community. I live three blocks that way. Started healing a minute into my walk, it was great. So very close to City Hall and, yeah.
So I think we have a, a short report from our PAC members. Feel free to, I think Nora has prepared some information to share with Mayor and Council.
Yeah. So I have three topics that I'd like to cover. Staffing, demographic shifts, and incorrect crime statistics. I've come to city council meetings and talked about two of these things before, so you're going to hear some repeated information, unless you're new. So bear with me, please. So according to, so starting with staffing. According to the FBI statistics, the average number of officers per thousand residents in a tier-three city, which is Auburn, so that's 50K to 100K, is 1.6, which would put us at 144 officers. I believe we currently have 118 officers. If you look at the national average, it's 2.4, and that would mean that we would need 216 officers. And if you ask the International Association of Chiefs of Police, who are probably a little biased, they would say 3.4, which would mean 306 officers. So since we are currently at 118, that means we're either 26, 98, or 188 officers understaffed. And one of the things the PAC would like to see is an updated calculation of true staffing need of our cities, as well as transparent, measurable solution to get the city fully staffed. Constant topic of conversation in PAC meetings, in fact, I would say this comes up at every PAC meeting, is diversity and inclusion within the police department. As of our last census, Auburn's demographics were 44% minorities and 49.7% female. And if you look at our police department, half-female? So Auburn's police department does not reflect the demographics of Auburn, and it needs to. It's not good enough for Auburn to do the minimum and throw a few women and brown people on the police roster and pretend that that is diversity and that diversity and inclusion are the same thing. Big believer in leading by example and for Auburn to serve every one of its citizens who live here or work here. We need a police department that not only reflects our population, but reflects it at every level of leadership. Last topic I want to bring up is something that I've spoken about before here, and that's incorrect crime statistics for our cities. The last police department annual report that's available online is unfortunately the 2021, so I don't have numbers for the last two years. But one thing it shows is a decreasing number of calls for service over the previous five years. I'd be interested to know if that trend has remained true for the past two years. But I don't think it's an actual reflection in a drop of crime in this city. If you go onto social media for any of the social media accounts for the city, so that's going on Nextdoor, if that's going on the Auburn community page on Facebook, if that's even looking at your Ring Cam app, people have stopped reporting crime in the city because they don't believe the police are going to show up. That's a problem. We have had people come to talk to the PAC. Last time, we had someone from, I forget the apartment complex, but they have stopped calling because people are not showing up. Someone had their, one of their maintenance men had their tools stolen, and the guy was still on property. No one showed up. And that's an issue. Like, we can't have crime happening, in the progress of happening, and not have people, police officers, show up. Yeah, so all of these things are related. I believe that all of these things are related. Officers can't show up if they are understaffed and there is a higher priority call. Like, someone's utility tool definitely does not take priority of a shooting in a neighborhood, right? I think everyone understands that. But people are also not going to call if they don't think the police are going to show up or if they are afraid to call police for whatever reason. So this is, we need people to report crimes so we have an under, an actual understanding of what and how many crimes are being committed for police to show up to those crimes. And we need enough officers to be able to cover growing population of the city. And we need those officers to reflect the community they serve so everyone can feel safe when they call the police.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Troll? No, I don't have anything to add. Great. That looks like our PAC report.
Do you have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
I must have misheard you. Did you say the last report was in 2021?
That is available online. I'm sure there have been more, and they used to be released online. I'm not sure if they just aren't being done. I mean, I assume they're being done and just not being released. I would like to see them if they are being done.
I'll look at that. Our annual report should be up for 2022. We're still finalizing our annual report for 2023, which is part of the process every year, so.
That's collaboration.
It should be finished up. But actually, very, very soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Cheryl, Councilmember Cheryl Rakes.
I just have a question. So how many officers are we actually budgeted for, and how many do we have?
We.
No.
Okay, sorry. We do have, we, we are, we have 100, we do not have, we are budgeted for 118. We have, I'd have to look at most recent numbers because we have a lot of, there's a lot, it's fluid. I think we're at 112 or 110 right now, so.
Any other questions?
Just.
Yes, Councilmember.
Okay, Houston, we're, depending on our, our population, we should have 144, or are we at 118 for, that's it?
What we're, what we are budgeted, what we have, we are, we have an allotted number of full-time employees. And that's the number that we have right now.
118.
That's what we have for full-time employees.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Betts.
What you will find when the next budget, biennial budget comes forward will be requests from our office to increase the number of police officers. Chief Collier is putting together that proposal, the new biennial budget. The directors will start putting things together this spring. You will be part of a leadership retreat one day in March, two days in April, where some prioritization of funding will be discussed. And I hope that you will give this your full consideration when it, when it comes to prioritizing.
All right, thank you. Right.
Our PAC meetings happen the second Thursday of every month. They are not open to the public, but they are open to council members. And the mayor, if you would like to show up, so you can contact anyone on the PAC, or you can just show up, we love good surprise.
So could you repeat?
The second Thursday of every month. So the next one, 6:00 at the Senior Center, except for August, that is our potluck. You are also welcome to come to the potluck. Yeah, so our next one would be March 14th.
And to the council, if you would, if you desired it, make that attendance, I would make sure you coordinate with Melissa so that we don't inadvertently end up with a unsanctioned quorum.
And do you want us to bring a potluck?
Only if you come in August.
In August.
In August.
We don't say no to cookies, though.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the report. Appreciate your service to our community, doing this work. And, you know, we want everyone in our community to really respect and honor our uniformed police officers. And you all helped promote that idea, so thank you very much. And you're released.
Thank you.
Your own recognizance.
Thank you.
All right. There's Director, you, you got from behind, I didn't see it. Next up will be our homelessness director, Kent Hay, who's going to provide a report to us. Jeff is also here. And other duties as.
Special projects.
Yeah.
Well, Kent, for the record, Jeff Hayes.
Kent Hay.
So Kent and I teamed up on something here. You know, Kent's technical expertise and all his experience of helping those in our community in need. And it's kind of normal work for me to help with code changes. So that's why we're side by side on this. So Ordinance 6938 is an ordinance that amends, seeks to amend, Chapter 9.50 of the Auburn City Code. It's a section of code that is in a chapter pertaining to blithering. And it is a section of code that deals with camping on non-park public properties. As noted in the ordinance, the recital statements, the whereas statements, a different chapter of City Code, Chapter 2.22, which is the Park Code, includes a provision that requires some level of transparency for tents. And our recommendation is to bring the same sort of concept towards tents that are also located outside parks. And in the, in Chapter 2.22, it actually requires that a couple sides of. of a tent must be transparent. Chapter nine point five oh seeks for a more modest amount of transparency. And maybe I can turn it over to Kent to talk a little bit about the purpose and value of having that sort of requirement in our city code.
Yeah, so for, I mean, I've been here almost four years now. And so when we do go to our encampments, especially now with the, it wasn't, it was a big deal back then, but especially now with the COVID crisis, when we're going to camps and we're not allowed to open tents, so we don't, so we'll announce our presence. The problem is, we don't know if someone's overdosing in there, if someone's passed away in there, and so until you've, the smell, or, you know, maybe an officer comes around, but by that, that time, I mean, somebody could literally, we could be standing there talking, trying to get a hold of someone, and they could be overdosing, and we have no clue that they're in there, and so we can't administer anything, or any kind of help. And so I know recently, we called him Bill, he was on the street for a while here, and my team, they just, Patty had just started, and Drew's been here about eight months, but we went to, they went across the street here, took an on-ramp on Eighteen, off of, I believe it's the Eighth Street. And he wasn't in a tent, but he was covered. And so we usually don't go around just grabbing things, but Drew kind of moved, pushed things, and we found him overdosed on the corner there. And so just, again, I, I bring that part up, not because it was a tent, but when things are covered and we can't see, it's, we would have never known he was there if we never, you know, moved something, or, and so how, you know, who knows how long he'd been dead there for, for that time. And so I think it's, it's very emergent, especially with what we have going on, and trying to get to people in time while they're overdosing, to, to be able to have some visual, visuals on people when they're, when they're in their tents there.
Councilmember Cheryl Rakes.
Kent, I have a question about that. So what happens if they don't comply? I mean, if they want it closed up, because they don't want anybody seeing them, and then how do we?
Well, the goal is, I mean, we don't go out there to harass people necessarily. We go out there to offer people help. And again, we're always offering assistance first, because the goal is we want you to go inside rather than stay out here. You know, if someone doesn't comply with that, then, you know, it is something that we have to, it wouldn't be a, right now, so like, when we go out to a tent right now, we offer assistance. Depending on the situation, we kind of determine what to do on that situation, but we do put the notice down. Sometimes we don't put the notice down, hoping that people will make a decision. And so I guess the first question would be, you know, trying to get them to understand what we have going on. It's a teaching moment, right? Because this is brand-new. But at some point, it, it'll become an issue that we have to address and possibly get the police involved. Hopefully, they never have to go there. But again, it's not a punishment. It's really how we're saving lives and giving people a chance to, to move forward in life and not die in a tent with, and waiting for somebody to find them.
Yes, Councilmember Clinton.
Thank you. So what would, what would that look like then for the individuals that already have those tents that are closed in? I know there would have to be some swapping out, and so who would, who would that be responsible for that?
Yeah, and I think there's some tents that do have, like, side window things that you can open on the side and that type of thing. I don't have all the answers for that. Really, it's, it's trying to get to a place where, again, it's teachable, and maybe that's something that, when we're talking to folks who are passing out tents, that we can start working with them on figuring out if they're going to be passing out tents, what that looks like in the city of Auburn, and the reasons why that we're asking for that to happen. And so I don't have a, I don't have a, an answer for you of swapping out tents or something like that, because I'm not in the, the business of giving out tents, the goal is to get people inside. But for those agencies and people who do pass out tents, or even for the food bank who might get out tents once in a while, what does that look like? And it might change in the winter time, right? I mean, it just, all the situations are all dependent on, on how we're trying to address that situation and get people up and, and participating.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Legally, how does that look like for us to go into a tent when somebody is not responding?
So for us, for the outreach workers, we don't go in, we don't have, we, we treat it, I mean, we, we treat it with the camping ordinance. I mean, we get to a point where we have to say, if you're, you know, if you're, we put the forty-eight hour notice down, and then come back, and then we can address that. And usually, we have the police to come out to do that, because they're, they have the ability to.
But then you waited forty-eight hours, and that person could already be dead.
Yeah, and that's why we're here in front of you, is we can hope we don't have to get to that point. Because again, we do have, I've been here four years, and I can't tell you how many people have, I mean, there's a lot of bodies that I've come across, and I didn't come here for that purpose. But we're in this, we're in a place now where, you know, if you don't get to people in time, and if we're just waiting.
So this new change that you, the wording that you have in there would allow you to be able to do that?
So the wording in there would prohibit people from having the, the four closed. So even if they had the tent in the front opened, right, it's visible that we can see in. It's just when you have everything closed down, there's no way to know what's, what's happening to you inside your tent. So it's not that you have to have the sides open or something like that. Some part has to be open, whether that's the zipper is open, so we can see in.
Yes, Councilmember Paul.
I think the change makes sense. I think the practicality of it is going to be a challenge. Just having camped a lot myself in the rainy weather of Washington State, you know, there's a lot of times where people are putting extra tarps over because of water leakage, where they could have a tent, but I could see them having challenges, even if they had one that met the requirement, because they're either trying to stay dry or stay warm. And so I, I like the concept, because I want you guys to be able to administer aid if needed, and, you know, also make sure that if we lose anyone in the community, that they can, you know, be found in a more respectful manner, in a more timely manner. I just, I, I don't know how well it's going to work in the day-to-day, so I don't know. I mean, if you think this will help, I think that works for me. I'm just, I see those other weather factors and extra tarps, and, I mean, most of the time I see a tent, I see extra tarps on it, at least the ones that are out for this particular issue, right? I don't know.
I mean, we're definitely humane when we go out. We're not like, if it's freezing outside, right, I understand that. It's, it's, again, it's trying to find that middle of, I know it's cold, but I don't want you to die, right? I want to be able to help you, so how do we, where's that balance at? And so I could understand what you're saying. I don't have a clear answer for you to tell you exactly how that looks like, but I, again, when we go out, when we address tents, it's not always, you know, straight by the, the book, where it's, it's, we have the ability to say, you know, we can put a forty-eight hour notice down and not deal with it for seventy-two hours, right? Or we could say, hey, I need you to keep this open, right? I can check on you, and I hear you, but I need you to keep this open, until we can figure out how to get you inside of what we're doing. But you can't, every time you close this, it's, it's an issue, because I know I can't help you if I don't know if you're overdosing in there.
Yes, Councilmember.
I just said, yeah, because like, it's, I can imagine even when we pass it, I think at least when you'd be walking there, they know, like, secret word, like, you're there, they will open it. So you'll have visibility. Unless, I think, I like it, I like that change. And when we call, they can close it at night, as long as when you do your walk and you be able to see the person alive. So thank you. I was just thinking, the way you said it, that's why I was saying, oh, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Paul.
So I think the main thing with this provision is it at least gives you and your team an opportunity to have the conversation and say, because we now have this, I need you to keep it visible, keep it open, add a plastic, you know, make a cutout, put in something, do a thing, basically.
Yeah.
And will that be enough, I guess, or enough for now?
Time will tell. We haven't had the ability, you know, it's always sad when you go out to an encampment and you're, you're yelling to let them know that you're there, because you don't know if they're asleep or not, but then to walk away, but have that feeling of someone could be asking for help, but, or someone could be dying, and, and they're just, you know, and they could still literally be alive, and we're, we're driving off, you know, because we can't open the tent and check on them.
Any other questions from the council? Well, appreciate the work you're doing, and I've been out with you, probably need to schedule another one, but, you know, I can imagine walking up to the tent, even if they have, like, the screen that, you know, tents have, camping tents. And if they're not answering, it presents you with a difficult choice, I imagine.
Even having the screen is better than getting zipped up and closed. So even the screen, being able to see in.
Right.
I can still see if there's a body or someone laying there or something, and we can, we can open it. When it's always, if nothing's closed, it's really challenging.
All right. Any last words? All right. Thank you all very much for being here and...
Appreciate it.
We'll have Jeff again.
So next up, we have a land, changing land use laws. Special projects director, and are you leading on this one?
All right.
Just stay comfortable.
Acting director can sit right there then, I guess.
Got a lot of projects, huh?
Oh, you don't even know. How short is your work? Well, tonight's presentation is an overview of what it takes to change a land use law. So this presentation I provided to council probably about a year and a half or two years ago. And this falls into the category of, you know, general information. There's nothing particularly timely about any particular land use law or anything like that, but also with new council members, it's something that I find important to come to and talk to council about, because changing a land use law is a lot different than changing the rest of the laws in the city. And so I'm going to walk through a few slides and just talk a little bit about what it takes to, to go through that process. So what are land use regulations? Here's a list of, of some of them, but the environmental regulations, the building codes, certainly zoning and development standards, subdivision regulations, clearing and land grading, all of these different kinds of regulations all have separate titles and chapters in the city code. And if I were to bring them forward and stack them on this table, it's probably three inches thick of, of local regulations. And some of those regulations point to other regulations, like the building code, which is about three feet tall of books stacked on top of one another. So a lot of times, we're faced with or tasked with changing these rules. Sometimes it's as a result of something we want to do locally, because we think that it's important. Other times, it's because the state legislature says, go change these rules, because the state legislature is saying so. So there's a lot of different layers of other regulations that help guide that or dictate what we have to do when it comes time to change, when we're required to change a land use regulation. So here are a few. The Growth Management Act is one that Department of Community Development lives underneath a lot of. And there's shoreline laws, there's environmental laws, there's, you know, the Endangered Species Act, the Clean Water Act, there's a whole bunch of different rules. And those get updated frequently, sometimes annually, and they provide mandates to local government to implement updated state and federal legislation. So when we have to approach that task, and maybe a more recent, in fact, I'm going to talk about it in a second, but like, missing middle housing, you know, that gets a lot of attention, and there's a lot in that legislation that says every city needs to do, and then, you know, list out five, ten, twenty different things that we have to address in our local rules. So it's a, there's kind of a double-edged sword in there, because a lot of state legislation, especially, gives cities room to move. So it doesn't necessarily say you have to do it this way. A lot of times, it's, here's the goal, you have to accomplish the goal, go figure it out. And that's great, because it gives us local autonomy, but it also means that, you know, it's a bigger research project, it's a bigger endeavor to figure out what's right for our community. So these are the basic bullet points of what it takes to change a law. We've got to research the options, we have to write the law, we have to evaluate the impacts of the law. And we don't, we do that in a lot of different ways. We do that with our community, you know, we look at the community, but we also have to evaluate what it means to fellow departments. We have to prepare staff reports, we have to go to, under state law, we have to bring land use laws to the Planning Commission. It's one of the few state laws that says that when you do something locally, there's a body that it has to go to before it comes to city council. You just heard us talk about like a camping ordinance change, that doesn't need to go to Planning Commission, land use laws have to. And they, if I were a council member, I would appreciate their work a lot, because they do a lot of heavy lifting. Councilmember Trump Manuel, very familiar with Planning Commission, having served on it. Councilmember Hanamur, same thing, served on Planning Commission. So you know that there's a lot of work that goes into what the Planning Commission does, so that by the time it does get to city council, you can have a lot of confidence that it's been well-vetted. There's been public hearings, and we've gone through an environmental review of those changes, we've, you know, done the public notice, we have to do something called state agency reviews, we have to submit all modifications to the Department of Commerce, who distributes those changes to all state agencies, who get a chance to look at what we're doing. There's public comments, there's inquiries, we respond to those, we respond to state agencies, we respond to the Puget Sound Regional Council, tribal inquiries, planning commissioners have questions, we revise the rules, we come back with another staff report, then we get to city council. So a lot happens, and all of these steps represent a lot of hours. Actually, yeah, there's a whole bunch of other, of those bullet points of what it takes to change the law. So, and, and really what I want to impart is the level of effort that goes into even doing something simple. So here's an example of, if we just simply wanted to change a number from ten to five, that's easy. I mean, the task is easy, but it's about a hundred and eighty hours of labor to, to make that change, and it takes about nine months to make that change, when you factor in all the process that it has to go through. So that's a simple one. When we went through the adoption of marijuana regulations, you know, that was more complicated, more public interest on that. That represented about fifteen hundred hours of work, so one employee, point seven five FTE, and about fifteen months of work to get to the finish line on that. And we are facing, you know, the need to make changes to implement HB eleven-ten for missing middle housing, and we're lucky, because we have a head start on that, because we had already committed to doing Housing Action Plan work and implementation of Housing Action Plan. But that is about a two-thousand-hour effort, a couple of years, to get through that process. So part of the reason, there's some self-serving interest in bringing a presentation forward like this, and that is because oftentimes, council members, planning commissioners, other departments will have interest of like, hey, you know, I heard from someone, and it sounds like this is really like causing there to be a challenge in getting a project through or something like that. Can we, you know, can we modify it? The answer's always yes, we could. The answer, the real question is, how do you fit it into the, to the, to the work? How do you fit it in? In Auburn, which is different than some municipalities, our long-range planners who work on this type of policy work are also our current planners who process project review. So for them, it's really taking... So for them, it's really taking, you know, time out to do the work as well. We could separate that, lots of cities do that. We like to combine it because when you're writing code and you're writing policy, you do a better job of it if you know how to implement it and you know what it means when you implement it. If those things get separate, it's easy to write code and policy that then someone a year later goes to implement, and it just doesn't work. It's not rooted in reality. So, so yeah, I mean, it is, it's a complicated process. And oftentimes we have a, not oftentimes, we always have a backlog of a whole bunch of code changes that we wish to make and bring forward through the process that we think will improve that, those, you know, how we do our work. But we kind of package those so that we can do groups of changes at one time and be able to bring those through that process more efficiently. Any questions?
Councilmembers, do we have any questions? Yes, Tru, Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Jeff, on all of these, you didn't state how many employees put in all those hours. Are they between two, three?
So it's primarily, I mean, it depends upon the regulation. But most land use regulations are managed by the planning services team. We have six planners on that team. We do take one of those planners, Josh Steiner, who's been before you and will be before you next month. And he does, the, the majority of his work is long-range planning work. But right now, he's shepherding us through the update to the comprehensive plan, which is a three-year effort. So those other planners, when Alexandria comes forward or a couple of months ago, Alyssa and Dinah were before you as well. So there's, there's six planners on that team. Now, when it's like the building code, in the past couple of building code cycles, Jason's brought the building code before city council. So it does spread into some other areas as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate that. The agenda, it appears like we've come to the end of the meeting, so this meeting is adjourned.